Yes.
Yes.
She's asking me to send her a message. Anybody here?
Yeah, I mean.
I think she called.
I knew she would. One minute.
I'm calling. Okay, ma'am. Just parking.
Okay.
This is.
Can I call this thing?
It's not funny.
Okay, it's four thirty-one, Monday, June twenty-seventh, and I'm calling this meeting to order. First item is. Establish quarrel.
Mayor Norrie Gonzalez-Garcia.
Here.
Councilwoman Jessica Otega. Mayor Pro Tem Ruben Plata.
Present.
Councilman Albion Flores.
Present.
Councilman Alberto Vela.
Here.
Mayor, we've established quarrel.
Next item is invocation and pledge of allegiance by.
If I can have everyone please stand. Heavenly Father, as we gather for this meeting, may we guide you to your love and the presence of your Spirit, empower us to recognize the ways in which we're blessed and continue to grant us a spirit of service. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
At the meetings to the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated.
The next item is disclosure of conflict of interest.
Yes, Mayor. This is. Chapter one seventy-six of the Local Government Code requires that certain local government officers file a disclosure statement. A local government officer is defined as a member of the governing body of a local government entity, a director, superintendent, administrator, president, or other person designated as executive officer of a local government entity or an agent of a local government entity who has such discretion in the planning, recommending, selecting, or contracting of benefits. What this form is, basically is chapter one seventy-six, which I've given you all a copy in the manila folder, explains the requirements for an elected official regarding any possible conflicts they may have in the nature of the city business that they oversee. So this is just a reminder, and we'll have it on every meeting, just to remind people that, and offer more transparency and things of that nature.
Okay, thank you so much. Next item. Our presentations, and the first presentation is by our state representative Bobby Giff.
Mayor. It's a real pleasure to call you mayor. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And to all of you, ladies and gentlemen, I. I am. Absolutely thrilled, my wife and I. To see you rise to your leadership position. And not only on behalf of my family, but on behalf of the citizens of Mission, we want to thank you so much for stepping up to the plate.
Thank you.
This commission, I've had cases many times with the city of Mission, but I've also been representing the city of Mission for many years as a state representative. And it's my honor today to present you with a resolution that was passed by the House of Representatives, and also a flag that was flown over the Texas Capitol. And so with your permission, Mayor, I would like to read the resolution in your honor.
Thank you. No one gave you a hand to hug.
At this time, I'll hand you the resolution. Well, we'll do that in a minute. Because I'm going to want you to come up here with me.
Okay.
It's a resolution passed by the Texas House of Representatives. Whereas Norrie Gonzalez-Garcia was elected mayor of Mission on June eleventh, twenty twenty-two, becoming the first woman in the city's history to hold that office. And whereas a lifelong resident of Mission, Ms. Gonzalez-Garcia brings a wealth of knowledge and experience to her new role. She has held here at Mission City Council seat for the past fifteen years, and she served for a decade on the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as with numerous other city boards and committees. This successful businesswoman owns Real Estate Investments Company LLC, and for more than three and a half decades, she has managed the family-owned Cabrito Market, Inc. meat processing plant in Palmview. And it's very good because I've had some of those cabritos at my ranch. Whereas honored as Woman of the Year for outstanding community service by the Progress Times, Ms. Gonzalez-Garcia has distinguished herself through her support of the Texas Citrus Fiesta, the Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce, the Junior Service League of Mission, and the Boys and Girls Club of Mission. She previously led the Mission Consolidated Independent School District Board of Trustees, and the Region One School Board Association as president, which is dear to my heart because my mother, back in the sixties, actually helped out there quite a bit as a new educator, and brought bilingual ed to the Rio Grande Valley, and we were very proud of that. She's also, Mayor Gonzalez has also been involved with parent-teacher organizations in Mission's school system, and she was a board of director for Agape Christian School. And whereas Ms. Gonzalez-Garcia graduated from Mission High School in nineteen seventy-seven, and she went on to earn her bachelor's degree from Pan American University in nineteen eighty-one. She shared thirty-four happy years with her late husband, Oscar Garcia, and she takes great pride in their four children, Karina, Oscar. I'm sorry, her late husband, Oscar, she takes great pride in their four children, Karina, Aisa, Oscar, Elena, and their six grandchildren, Joshua, Isaiah, Christian, Oscar, Kevin, and Mateo. She is a valued parishioner of our Lady of Guadalupe Catholic Church. And whereas the effective operation of government depends on the able and dedicated efforts of our public servants, and Norrie Gonzalez-Garcia may reflect with pride on her merid- mirrored accomplishments to date as she takes on the challenges and opportunities of her new position, now therefore be it resolved that Norrie Gonzalez-Garcia be congratulated on her election as mayor of Mission, and that she be extended sincere best wishes for her successful future tenure in office. And again, this was passed by the House of Representatives in Austin, Texas, and I also have a, the same document that's been framed that I'm going to give you, and also a flag that was flown over the Texas Capitol. And I give this to you. In your honor as our new mayor, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Three, two, one. Can I get one with you guys right here in the center, and then all you guys behind her?
Sure.
Are you guys could come?
Come, come, come down.
No, you can come down. You can come down here. In the center of the floor, sorry.
We're going to get cozy here.
Everybody looking over here? Up in three, two, one. Can we move? Thank you.
Thank you. One more, sorry guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes. Mayor, and I must add that it has been a great pleasure. When your daughter was working at my law firm, she's absolutely brilliant, and she's very dynamic, and congratulations to you, and of course, your late husband, and to your entire family, God bless you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. As I say in court, may I be excused? Thank you very much.
Okay, the next presentation, I believe, is not happening by the school district.
It's going to be rescheduled.
Is it going to be rescheduled? Okay, so the next item is number three, May twenty-two Employee of the Month.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today, we are presenting to you our Employee of the Month for May. The May Employee of the Month is Mr. Ricardo Cardosa, our Water Distribution Crew Leader, who was nominated by Mr. Omar Cantu, our Water and Wastewater Supervisor, and I'd like to ask both of them to please join me up here. The nomination reads as follows. Mr. Cardosa is always willing and ready, ready for all assignments given to him. He is the crew leader that we rely on to train all new pipe layer labors for our Water Distribution Division. His attention to detail is key when it comes to training our new personnel. He also takes the time to follow up with his coworkers when something is not being done properly. He takes the time to teach and mentor them. He not only makes time for his coworkers on work-related matters, but also in personal matters. I recently witnessed Mr. Cardosa bless a coworker who wasn't able to pay for lunch. Like always, Mr. Cardosa did not hesitate to help. He stood up and walked into the convenience store and returned with a warm meal in hand and gave it to his coworker. This is one example of the many things that Mr. Cardosa has done to assist his coworkers. Above all, he takes pride in the work he does on a daily basis, never expecting any recognition or gratitude for the extra effort. He exemplifies how a city of Mission employee serves not only his community, but his coworkers. Thank you, Mr. Cardosa, for your dedication to your community and your team. We appreciate all you do.
Thank you, Mr. Cardosa.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations. Come with it.
Come on, guys. You can hold it right there. There we go. Everybody looking over here? Three, two, one. One, three, two, one.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is a proclamation for the Boys and Girls Club Week.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Council, the Rick Vanessa with the Boys and Girls Club of Mission. Joining me today are Kayla Garza, our Grants and Compliance Manager, and Annette Galván, our Programs Director. Our proclamation reads as follows. Whereas National Boys and Girls Club Week has been celebrated since nineteen forty-one, and whereas National Boys and Girls Club Week recognizes the invaluable service Boys and Girls Clubs bring to our communities, paving the road for great futures that are within reach of every young person who enters our doors. Whereas the Boys and Girls Club of Mission, originally chartered in nineteen eighty-four, has been a long staple of the community as it has provided a safe haven where our community's youth can participate in life-building activities and become upstanding citizens. And whereas the various athletic and educational programs the Boys and Girls Club has provided our youth with every opportunity to succeed, and has taught them that no dream is beyond reach as long as they work hard and never give up. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, do hereby proclaim the week of June twenty-fifth through July first, twenty twenty-two, to be National Boys and Girls Club Week. And as a community to join us in celebrating National Boys and Girls Club Week because great futures start here, proclaim on this day, twenty-seventh day of June, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the program presentation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I may add.
You'll have to come up here.
I've been a part of this club for thirty years. My first job, it's only fitting that this proclamation is in front of you, as you were one of the first people to welcome me to the Boys and Girls Club. So we've got, like I said, a great future coming, and we are ever so thankful to our City Council and our executive team and everybody at the city for, you know, our support, daily support, and everything we're looking forward to do. Thank you so much.
Thank you for everything you all do.
Thank you.
Come on up. Come on up.
All right, everybody looking over here? All right, everybody looking over here? In three, two, one. One more, in three, two, one. Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, the next item is the report from our chamber.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this Thursday, we will be hosting our Tourism Membership Mixer. It's going to be held at the Bungalows. The Bungalows has been renovated, so we're really excited to show it to our partners. It's happening at five thirty PM until seven, so please join us. I do have y'all's invitations with me. We do have a ribbon cutting at ten thirty AM, and it is for Tropical Smoothie here off Sherry, so we're really excited, so we hope that someone from the city can join us to give them the warm welcome. The nomination committee has been set by the Chairman of the Board, so we are now accepting board nominations for the year two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three. The members have been informed via email, and we are looking at five board positions for either reelection or election. And we continue the preparation programming for next year, so we can get together for our annual report and our upcoming annual awards. A reminder, we are accepting award nominations. The event is scheduled for October thirteenth, and that's for Business of the Year, Business Leader of the Year, and Community Impact Award. And just a reminder, our Buenas that this luncheon lineup, we are waiting for one final confirmation before we roll out the actual lineup. We're really excited to roll it out, and it's scheduled for August tenth, and that's all I have this evening.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, the next item is the departmental reports. Everybody has those in their binders, does anyone have any questions?
I'm going to approve the reports as presented.
There's a motion and a second to approve the report as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Next item is citizens' participation. Has anyone signed up?
Yes, ma'am, I had one person sign up, and that's Mr. Rick Salinas.
Okay.
Good evening, folks. It's hot outside, okay, so.
Name and address.
Rick Salinas, twenty-eleven, North Conway, Mission, Texas.
Thank you.
Real quick, I wanted to address something with you that I think has been a little unnerving for me, and I'll make it quick. I think it's what, three minutes now, right, or two minutes?
Two minutes.
Two minutes? Okay, I heard somebody was considering three minutes.
You can have three minutes.
Well, I don't know if I want them, I'm not seeking public office or anything like that, I'm not a politician, but I was concerned, and I did address with Mr. Perez, the city manager, an issue concerning public commentary, which is exactly what I'm taking advantage of right now. None of my comments are designed to attack any one person, or address any one thing, or go beyond anything that would be considered defamatory. However, I will tell you that historically, what I've seen, because it's on Zoom, I've seen certain members that are not here today take advantage of the public comment, and I understand, and I spoke to Mr. Perez, which is the city manager, and we kind of, I think he looked for a report from TML or somebody. It's not really specifically addressed. I can tell you that I've got a little experience with the issues concerning defamation and defamation lawsuits that don't have anything to do with you, but it's an area of concern for those that come up here and want to speak, and they seem to be thinking that maybe they're cloaked with some, you know, inability for people to sue, or for you all to sue them based on these comments. These comments are exaggerated. They go beyond public criticism, which is really what public comments are designed to be. It's designed for me to come up here and address something with you like I am today, something of concern. It's not meant to be a political soapbox, and I'll say it this way, the old proverbial saying, each and every one of you has put your money where your mouth is. You ran for office. You had a political agenda. I hate the phrase, but that's what it was, and it's all hopefully for the betterment of this city. If people want to come up here and make comments that are defamatory about any one of you, any one of you, anybody, all right, they need to put their money where their mouth is, and they need to run for public office. And if they're not going to do that, then they need to watch what they say up here in this pulpit, because people like me are going to be watching. We will file what we need to file. When anyone gets up here and makes any comments that fall within that realm of defamation, anything that goes beyond criticism, or the need to address something with you about the overall benefit of the city, anything that goes beyond that, we will be watching. And I think that if it was any one of you, any one of you, I would always be willing to entertain representing any one of you where that goes beyond where it should be. I'm hoping that you all get together in executive session or wherever you get, I'm not, again, I don't do this, this what you're doing for a living, I do something else. I'm hoping you all discuss it, because your charter does have a provision in it that doesn't allow for it, all right? TML may say one thing, and even though it's embedded in our constitution, it's embedded in all municipalities, where members of the public should come forward and make, and point something, some things out, it is for that. There's no doubt, I'd be the first one defending it. And if the city of Mission didn't allow it, I'd be suing the city of Mission, saying, shame on you, you should allow it. Mission has a history of allowing that to happen, like it should, but recently, recently, and in previous administrations, it's gotten out of hand. I'm hoping now, Mayor, that things will change, and that you will visit with each other and make sure that it's something that's going to be productive for the people here in Mission, all right? You won't see me come back again. I won't take these three minutes, and use three minutes tomorrow, and three minutes after that, three minutes after that, because what some of the people here have done, they come up here and they say the same thing over and over again, and it doesn't turn into a three-minute, whatever you want to call it, it turns into a dissertation, and it's the same thing over and over again, and I believe that that's a violation of this city's charter. Thank you. May I be excused, just like Bobby Eros said? Thank you. Please hurry, right?
Thank you. And that's it? Is there anyone on, online? No? Okay. Alright, next item. There are no public hearings today. And so the next item is the Consent Agenda. Is there anything on the Consent Agenda that would, that y'all would like to pull, to be discussed separately?
Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Items 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, and 13.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the Consent Agenda Items as presented, which is, number eight is approval of the minutes, nine is acknowledgement, acknowledge the receipt of the minutes, 10 is authorization to submit grant application to NEH for Humanities Collections and Reference Resources Grant Program, number 11 is authorization to solicit bids for construction of restrooms at city parks, number 12 is authorization to solicit qualifications for land-serving services, and number 13 is authorization to solicit qualifications for property appraisal services. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Approvals and authorizations, item number 14. Ms. Luna?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item number 14 is a Homestead Exemption Variance for a .145 acre tract of land more or less out of and forming part of Lot 3 Dillard subdivision. It is currently zone R1, single-family residential, and the applicant is Abinabad, Amisabad Palacios. The tract is located on the west side of Pino Street, approximately 100 feet north of V6 Street. The lot measures approximately 6,333.65 square feet. The lot exceeds the minimum square inch for an R1 lot. The applicant proposes to construct a single-family residence. On November 10, 2014, the City Council passed the Homestead Exemption Variance Ordinance, which allows for homesteads to be granted various waivers to city's subdivision requirements if and only if the lot is being proposed for the applicant's personal, single-family residential home. However, this process needs to be done within one year of approval. The applicant is proposing to comply with city water sewer. Staff is recommending approval subject to requirements of a Homestead Exemption Variance, the affidavit, and compliance with model subdivision rules. This item is now before you.
Is there a motion to be offered?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the Homestead Exemption Variance as presented by staff. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item. Authorization to purchase Prestige Crown Chair Back Cushion Sets for Mission.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I stand before you seeking authorization to purchase Prestige Crown Chairs Back Cushion Sets for the Mission Event Center from War Space Interiors by Office Depot via Ovnia Region 4 Contract R 191812. This item is before you now.
And this is the replacement of the damaged chair backs?
That is correct.
Is there any discussion or a motion?
Move for approval, Mayor? Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the item as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you.
Next item.
Mayor, Council. Good afternoon. Item 16 is consideration to increase citizens' participation from two to three minutes. As we all know, the public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. This is an opportunity for members of the public to inform the governing body about their views or on items that are on the agenda. And we're seeking council direction on this consideration.
Is there any discussion or a motion?
Mayor, I have a motion to go ahead and approve since the rest of the municipality due to three minutes. So we'd like to be fair as everybody else.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to increase the citizens' participation from two to three minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you.
Next item is the April 2022 Tax Collection Report. Ms. Vela?
Good afternoon. Item number 17 is the April 2022 Tax Collection Report. The total adjusted 2021 tax levy is $26,019,694.25 and the amount of the collections as of April 30th, 2022 is $24,714,895.25, which represents 94.99% of the total 2021 tax levy. Total adjusted delinquent tax levy is $24,012,771.92 and the amount of collections as of April 30th, 2022 is $443,379.16, which represents 18.38% of the total delinquent tax levies. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Is there any questions or a motion?
I want to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the April 2022 Tax Collection Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you.
Next item.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I come before you to present item 18. Discussion on Possible Action to Select Engage Architect Form From Architect Professional Pool to Address the Needed Parks Recreation Rule Repairs. Architect Professional Pool consists of Archiform Architects, EGV Architects, ERO, Gignac, Milnet, Master Design, PBK, Rafa Architects, The Warren Group, and ZDA Architecture. Staff and City Manager recommends approval for any on this listed on the pool. Staff recommends Milnet Architects. As you all see in your packages, there's a list of architects which we already awarded several projects. We just awarded ERO. I don't see it here on the, ERO Architects was awarded about two council meetings ago for the roof repairs for the City Hall.
I believe we, through the meeting, Madam Mayor, didn't we recommend Mr. Vela?
That is for item 22.
Oh, okay. We had two today? I move for approval for the recommendation of our department.
Okay.
Second.
Alright, there's a motion and a second to recommend Milnet Architectural Services. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 19. Authorization to Solicit Bids for Construction of Drainage Improvements Projects. Bids will be requested for the following projects, which is Glasscock and Tulip, which is in the vicinity of Business 83 and FM 495. Isaguirre Engineering Group has completed the design for Project Glasscock. HCE has completed the design for Project Tulip. Staff and City Manager recommends approval.
I want to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize staff to solicit bids for construction of the drainage improvements as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
Madam Mayor, I'm gonna go ahead and abstain.
Okay, so it's a four and one abstention.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Next item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item number 20. Acceptance of Special Warranty Gifted Donation from La Jolla ISD to the City of Mission for the Public Purpose of Drainage Improvements. La Jolla Independent School District intention is to donate the property to the City of Mission for public purpose detention pond. In exchange for donation, all costs of creating and maintaining the detention ponds are to be borne by the city. The city intends to continue to use the real property for said detention pond in satisfaction of Texas Education Code 11.154. Property, it's approximately two acres of land out of 24.43 acres out of Lot 1, La Jolla Enrique Camarena Elementary, Number 19. Staff and City Manager recommends approval.
I want to approve.
Second.
Madam Mayor, I have some questions, if I may.
Sure.
Yes.
So this property, Mr. Terrazas, where, is it located within our city limits?
That is correct, Councilman Flores. This is the property on Inspiration and north of 495.
Oh, this is.
That's where we are planning to drain our, one of our drainage projects, which is Esperanza Project, which we're gonna get the bids tomorrow. Hopefully, we'll get bids for Esperanza, Gabriel, and Stewart. So this is one of the areas where we're gonna be draining into.
Thank you.
The school's on Morefield, the elementary school. This is on the east end of that school, which is in our city limits.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Are there, is there any other discussion? Then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Madam Mayor, on number 21, if we can take no action, I believe there's gonna be a workshop set up to, for to discuss this item.
Yes, and there is a meeting and kind of a exit meeting scheduled for Wednesday as well. So no action on item number 21. Item number 22.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item number 22. Authorization to Engage EGV Architects for the Design of the Sherry Golf Course Maintenance Building. Authorization to Engage EGV Architects for the Design of the Maintenance Building. Staff and City Manager recommends approval.
I want to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize to engage EGV Architects for the Design of the Sherry Golf Course Maintenance Building. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item.
Yes, Mayor and Council. Item 23 is Authorization to Partner with the County of Idalua and Mission CISD for the Idalua County WiFi Project Precinct 3, Zone 6. The total cost for this project is gonna be $204,000 with the City of Mission to be paying either a partial, a portion of this, you know, depending on what the negotiations are once, once they're approved. But Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Move for approval?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the Authorization to Partner with Idalua County and Mission CISD for the Idalua County Project Precinct 3, Zone 6. Is there any discussion, questions, a motion?
A motion.
There's a motion?
Why, second.
And a second to approve item number 23 as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item. Chief?
Mayor and Council, good evening. Item number 24. Discussion and Action to Transfer the Mission Fire Department Station Number 2 to the new City of Mission Public Safety Building located at Military Parkway and Bray Fogle. Due to proximity of Central Station and Station Number 2 with overlapping response districts, a proposal for Fire Station Number 2 to be transferred to the, to the new City of Mission Public Safety Building located at Military Parkway and Bray Fogle. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Move for approval?
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the transfer of Mission Fire Station Number 2 to the new City of Mission Public Safety Building located at Military Parkway and Bray Fogle. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor.
5-0. Thank you, Chief. Okay, next item is unfinished business. I don't believe there's any routine matters, City Manager's comments?
Yes, Mayor and Council, I have several comments. We have several events throughout the city. We're gonna have an event on Wednesday, June 29th, for a community event, One Stump Shop, from 9:00 to 3:00 at the Mission Seat Building, 801 North Bryant. And this is for rent mortgage utility assistance will be provided by three different agencies, which is the Affordable Homes of South Texas, CDBG, and Idalua County Community Service Agency. Another event that we're gonna have is the Elder Abuse Awareness Month Drive. It's on Wednesday, June 29th. It's the Mission Valley Nursing and Transitional Care and also Mission Nursing Rehabilitation Center. And this is in the vicinity of South Bryant and Trinity. Also, we're gonna have an adoption clinic, Summertime Adopathon, on Thursday, June 30th, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Also here at our Seat Building by the Five by Five Brewery, 801 North Bryant Road. Also, Mayor, movies on the lawn every Thursday on July, we're gonna start on July 7th at 7:00 PM at the Mission Historical Museum. Also, the music at the park on Friday, July 8th, at the Leo Peña Placita Park, from 6:00 to 9:00. Also, the Mission Possible Paid Food Drive to be dropped off at the Firebreak Pizza, movie night, or ranch house burgers. All donations to benefit our City of Mission Food Pantry. Also, Mayor, and others, events that we've been having on the weekends, on Saturdays, since we started two weekends, weekends ago. On Saturdays, we're distributing sandbags, self-serve, from 8:01 at Lyons Park in Quica de la Garza Loop. We're, we're gonna be having this stationary sandbags events every Saturday through our hurricane season. Also, I wanna remind everyone that the city offices will be closed on Monday for 4th of July, you know, Independence Day. We will have a skeleton crew readily available and of course, our sanitation department will work and will be in standby on our phones if anything is needed. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any comments today.
No comments, Ms. Mayor. Thank you.
No comment, Mayor.
No comment, Mayor.
No comment.
Okay. The next item is Executive Session. So pursuant to Government Code Section 551.001, all in favor to move into Executive Session, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. And we'll be back.
Are we gonna start coming back here?
There's the motion and a second to reconvene. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Martinez.
Yes ma'am, on the item for executive session, it'll be a no action today, but we do have a meeting set up with the vendor later this week.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to adjourn.
Alright, second?
Second.
Who's second?
Who's gonna say?
Second.
Alright, motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Good night everybody.